All right. Welcome to the November 4th, 2024 Meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up on our agenda tonight, I have a proclamation in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Sherrar History Museum, of the Stillwater History Museum at the Sherrar Cultural Center. And I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, and I think we have the Director of the Museum here as well to say a few words. So whereas the Stillwater History Museum at the Sherrar Cultural Center has proudly served the city of Stillwater and its residents for 50 years, its mission is to illuminate, preserve, and celebrate the diverse and collective history of Stillwater. And whereas since its founding, the museum has been essential in cultural preservation in Stillwater, offering educational exhibits and programs that bring to life the stories of the people, traditions, and events that have shaped our city. And whereas through the diligent efforts of its board members, staff, volunteers, and supporters, the museum has preserved countless artifacts, photographs, and archival materials that document the diverse experiences of the residents of Stillwater, past and present. And whereas the museum's 50th anniversary represents a significant milestone in the cultural and historical life of Stillwater, marking half a century of commitment to historical preservation and public education. And whereas the museum continues to be an active collaborator and partner with Stillwater Public Library, the OSU Art Museum, Prairie Arts Center, and other members of Stillwater's downtown cultural district. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim, celebrate, and honor the Stillwater History Museum at the Sherrar Cultural Center for its 50th anniversary, November 9th, 2024. And the Director of the Museum, Caterina De Arasho, is here to speak to us or give us a few words about the museum?
(inaudible).
Please come to the mic.
Hi, everyone. So I'm taking over as the new Director for Amelia Chamberlain, and I'm thrilled to be here. I think the museum is a gem in Stillwater. Fifty years, we can only do that with the support of the community. We've been, it's a pleasure for me to walk into a space where it has been built from the bottom up and throughout all these years with the help of the community. So I'm here to celebrate the anniversary, but also on November 9th, which we're going to celebrate these 50 years, I also will present my vision for the future, but I'm going to continue to build on the building blocks of preservation and education. So thank you so much for this proclamation, and I appreciate all the support of the Stillwater and its community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Picture time. All right, that takes us to item four, which is the consent docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Vote of four to zero, consent docket is approved. Item five is public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I think everybody I've got up here is here to speak about the public hearing. So we'll move down to item seven, which is our public hearing. 7A is presentation and second public hearing pursuant to 62 OS 859 of the proposed Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan and its supporting six incentive districts for the purpose of providing the public an opportunity to be heard in support of or in opposition to the proposed project plan. This time I will open the public hearing and I'll ask that Dan Bachelor, our Special Counsel for Economic Development, comes and gets us started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, members of the public. I'm Dan Bachelor. I'm here with my partner Lisa Harden. We are a part of the Center for Economic Development Law, and we were engaged to assist the city of Stillwater in connection with its economic development activities and specifically in connection with this prospective opportunity to ensure the development of a data center by a Fortune 100 company. We previously presented information about this proposed project plan at the first public hearing, which was held in order to provide you information with regard to the project and to respond to questions from the public and from you with regard to the proposed project plan. This evening, the focus is to provide an opportunity to speak for or against this proposed project plan adoption. I want to begin by saying that it has been our privilege to work with quite a number of communities around the state of Oklahoma, and this state and these communities are our home in many, many respects. I want to tell you, speaking candidly tonight, that evaluating these experiences and the relationships in other communities, there are two reasons why you should approve this proposed project plan to make possible this extraordinary project. The first reason is that this project and its consideration have been approached with the utmost care, commitment, and competency that any community could offer on behalf of its citizens. And we say that from years of experience working with many communities and leadership groups around the state of Oklahoma. Everyone needs to know that the high level of competency of the city leadership, its staff, and those who carry out its public missions are simply exceptional, and no effort has been spared to ensure that every consideration has been taken into account in the formulation of this prospective effort. The second reason is that it is, in fact, an extraordinary project because it offers a substantial investment in this community. Initially, it would create the development of two phases of a data center, $500 million investment for each phase, creating 30, approximately 30 very high-quality jobs for each phase. It would drive economic development for the long term. It would create an opportunity for skills training and partnerships with your brilliant technology, and it would provide financing support for many community endeavors and for the long-range economic development strategies of this community. Because of these attractions and potential benefits, the review committee, which is required to be assembled by statute, made up of representatives of each affected taxing jurisdictions and three representatives of the public at large, approved and recommended the approval of this project plan and forwarded to the City Council and the Planning Commission for their respective considerations. The Planning Commission likewise recommended its approval and found that the proposed project plan is in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. The financial impacts would be very significant. Over the longer term, each phase would generate something between, based on our projections, something between $750 million and $1.5 billion of positive economic impact to the community from each phase. A significant financial aspect, however, of the project plan and the economic development agreement, which would be entered into in order to implement it, would be the provisions that provide that each affected taxing jurisdiction will receive payments in lieu of taxes, which would amount to, in the aggregate, about $867,000 annually, growing by 1% a year, allocated among the taxing jurisdictions in proportion to the ratio that they received the allocation of taxes in the last taxable year. Those payments would be made for each development phase, so for two phases, you would get twice that. The project plan contains, however, provisions for four additional phases, bringing the total to six, but to reach that full development would require a supplemental economic development agreement, which is not yet negotiated and not yet close to being ready for consideration. But the two phases together would require twice the amount of those payments in lieu of taxes, plus a community betterment payment flowing to the city each year in the amount of a little over $132,000 a year, so that the payments from the company flowing to the community would total approximately $1 million a year. There's a third economic factor, which significantly increases the potential benefit to the community, and that is if the franchise extension for OG&E is approved by the voters at the vote tomorrow, that means that the electric power to support the first two phases of this data center development would be supplied by OG&E. The advantage of that is twofold. First, it would create a 3% annual franchise fee flowing to the community, which could be used for a combination of public improvements, public benefit, and economic development projects over the period of operation of the data center, and that amount for two phases could amount up to a cap of $4.5 million a year, and the cap would later begin to grow at specified times. So that the annual combined revenues flowing from the company to the benefit of the community would be something on the order of $3 to $3.5 million or more per year, which would amount to, from Phase 1, almost, almost $80 million, and from Phase 2, would amount to more than $80 million over the 25-year period that the company received the tax exemptions. Now you might ask the question, why should the company be granted a tax exemption? The reason is twofold. One is that because the investment is so intensive, the tax load would place this state and this community at a competitive disadvantage with many other states, a lot of which do not even have taxes on personal property. So it assures a competitive position. The second reason is that the amount of revenue that is generated, not counting the franchise fee, is as much as if all this property, which generates very little tax revenue at the present time, had been developed by something on the order of subdivision of, say, 250 homes at a market price of $300,000 or so each. So that the economic benefit to be received by the community is greater than what would be received by the ordinary suburban development of this property. So when you add the economic development aspects with the community aspects and the long-term benefit, it becomes a remarkable opportunity for this community. I mentioned at the outset the great care that had been given to this project by your leadership and by your city staff, and in particular by its engineers, its legal people, its operating people. In doing that, we are seeking to assure through an economic development agreement that all of the interests of the community and the city will be protected. We are close to completing that agreement, but it is that agreement that assures that the terms of the project plan will be carried out with maximum benefit to the community. And for that reason, it is our recommendation that after you conclude the public hearing, that you continue action on the ordinance, and by then to your next regular monthly meeting, and by then we anticipate that we would have completed satisfactorily the final terms of the economic development agreement, which is necessary to implement this project plan. Be happy to respond to any questions at this point.
Counselors, any questions?
If not, I'll stand by and be available.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. I have a list of folks here. I have several forms of folks who have signed up to speak. Again, if you are here to speak on the item or wish to share your opinion as to the project plan and the tax incentive plan that we have before us, please grab a form and sign up. First up, I have Crystal Hayes. Just as a reminder, please introduce yourself, name and address, and you have five minutes to share your opinions on the project plan.
Hello. Crystal Hayes, 908 East Richmond Road. I'm sure of you have seen numerous postings on Facebook. Half of them are not for me personally, just to clear that up. I've talked with different ones, mayor, dah 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 dah. My husband, Roger, would be here, standing by my side tonight if he hadn't just had major surgery. But Kish Micheners, city attorney, mayor, but especially Mr. Brady. You see, Brady has empathy written all over his face. It was only because of Brady that I feel like I count too. Even when I'm not invited, he sends me an invitation. I'm not here to spend time, you know, telling you the pros and the cons of this data center. I trust you all have already done all of that research. In fact, probably back 2018. While it is extremely admirable for your vision to create and generate and breathe millions of dollars into the very life of Stillwater, it's only created sadness and heartache for me personally. Sometimes what's good for the goose is really not good for the gander. You'll have to apologize. I apologize, I'm a little emotional. I was bottle-feeding my calf, and I didn't take a shower, and I'm muddy, but I typed this up anyway, so. It's the silence that I'm lacking for this company. I've watched a very good friend of mine have 30 days to move all of her cows and didn't have anywhere else to go. I've watched people come into my land to survey, pee on the corner thinking nobody can see them. But millions of dollars can spark. Sometimes that spark can blind you. You may not be doing the right thing if you can't see through it all. Have any of you guys ever lived in your home for 30 years? 30 years? Anybody live under really high-power voltage lines? Have everybody of you guys have a computer, a laptop, a telephone, or anything that's lasted for 25 years? Anybody? They're probably jumped somewhere. 25 years is a long, long, long time to replace buildings, equipments, electric lines, water But just because it's whomever, Google, Amazon, I don't even, whatever, just because they're confident for y'all to jump, that doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. Have anybody else been there at the side pulling a newborn calf? I have a lot of school kids come out and watch that. I appreciate Mrs. Carnley. Jimbo's a real good friend of mine. He's helped me with hay a lot. I just have a problem taking the words of a billion-dollar company. After all, it's a billion-dollar company, right? Who really knows what real money's like? But I do know that this company, their veins run very, very deep in other billion-dollar companies who do not, do not, excuse me, they cause more harm than good. I'm just here because I want to do the right thing. I know that I'm going to stand up here for the value of my land. I'm going to stand up here for the safety of my water well, which is the only water I've ever had for 30 years. I'm going to stand up here because today I saw my two bald eagles hunting and fishing in my pond. Today it was just cool. I'm standing up for the disappearing wildlife and the habitat, for the deer and the turkey and the dove, the bobcats. I'm here standing up for my donkeys. They're the greatest neighbors to Tower Park ever. And I'm here to stand up for my livelihood at the Circle H Ranch. I am a very well-respected cow-calf producer. I've stood up for unseen years of construction, concrete, God only knows what, but most importantly, I stood up for the future of my children and their children and children. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Rocky Blazer? It's Rocky here. Robin Cornwell?
Good evening. Good evening. Is the sound okay? Robin Cornwell, 2223 North Crescent Drive, Stillwater. You may recall that I had some concerns about whether the electricity to power the data centers would come from clean energy. But after hearing from you all at the last public hearing and hearing from Mr. Bachelor and his colleague, and subsequently I was able to talk with a representative of OG&E, I feel confident to support the project plan, the data center project plan, including having OG&E as energy provider. I just want to say, just want to add one thing, that I think it's still important to advocate for clean energy, and I hope there will be something in the economic development agreement supporting clean energy, and I'll continue to advocate for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Bowman?
I'm Tony Bowman, First Deputy County Commissioner to Rhonda Margum, District 3, and address 506 Expo Circle South. I'm here tonight to represent the constituents of Payne County, District 3, that have some concerns to the north and to the east about the noise and the change of the skyline. You know, we've had a lot of constituents, you know, come in and email and talk and everything about, you know, they thought it was school land, so they thought it would always be the same, which I understand. But, you know, school land and my, I've been around it my whole life and it's never changed. You know, it usually don't change hands. So, you know, the concern for after Phase 2 is, you know, the bigger transmission lines that, you know, will come across people's property to the north and to, you know, from the east. So we were just, you know, voicing the concerns of our constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Roger Goss?
Roger Goss, 1120 East Cornell. I've learned more about data centers and electricity in the last month than I ever thought I'd know. I sure didn't want to be an electrical engineer. Recently, I've driven around a data center, and I was within 100 feet of the buildings on paved surface, and I couldn't hear anything from the data centers. I mean, there was just absolutely no noise, except the road noise from my car. I've looked into the renewable energy that folks are wanting, and OG&E's got a really good track record and a plan to move forward with that. I think folks will be, if that passes, they'll be happy with electricity we're going to get. The economic benefit for this, for this community is just, I don't know that we've had anything like this. The university is a big economic engine, but they don't pay a lot of taxes, that we don't get their pilot money or anything. So this will be good, so we can enhance the community with quality of life projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Henri Yuhara? Henri's the last one. I have signed up, so if you were here and you thought you were going to speak, please let us know.
Good evening. Henri Yuhara, 1911 East Kelsey. I came up here a month ago to voice my concerns regarding the massive power consumption that these data centers emit or consume, and resulting in a huge amount of carbon emissions being emitted. But based on what we've been told by the economic development negotiator here, that the company is a good corporate citizen that has concerns about the same, about their carbon emissions output, and does try to offset their power consumption through renewables, I feel more comfortable in supporting the project. It would be nice, like what Robin said, that there was some language that was put into the EDA, the Economic Development Agreement, that brings this up and tries to stress to the company that this community is very concerned about this issue. The other thing is the wastewater or the water consumption, we'd certainly like to see the company work on newer technological advancements that allow for water recycling and to use recycled wastewater to be part of this project. And I know that in the future phases, that might be a possibility, but it would certainly be nice that they work on that even for the first two phases, if possible. Finally, I think this project really needs OG&E as a partner in the project. It really doesn't, based on my due diligence, the complexity of providing power to these data centers is much more well-suited for OG&E to do than anyone else, and so for the voters out there, please pass the approval for this franchise fee, because the attractiveness of this project is very much, doesn't require, but it would make it much more attractive if OG&E is part of this plan. So in any event, I'd just like to say that this is, in my opinion, a once-in-a-generation economic opportunity for the community, and so I am in full favor of having this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have no one else sign up to speak. Maybe I missed one. Hold on. If you're here and you want to speak, this is your chance. I called Rocky Blazer earlier. Still not here? Come on up. Chad Hagan?
Yes. Chad Hagan, 46 Windsor Circle in the West Park. So I don't live near the data center, and I'm not necessarily opposed to the data center. You might have seen my social media post. I do feel like there is a lack of public discussion, and I know there's been mentions of it in 2018 and before, and I know the City Council has the right to do these things, but this is different than putting in a sidewalk. And, you know, it would have been nice to have an environmental impact report, maybe hear from other people, because the data centers I know of, and I have a lot of people in my family that are data science. Henri knows my father-in-law, Dr. Hagan. He's an electrical engineer. So we're a data science family. We use data science. We use data science, you know, I got, anyway, we're not opposed to data, but in other areas, the water shortages, you know, these projects come in saying one thing, and then they do another. And I know it's good, everyone's talked about the money, but I haven't heard about the environmental impact report. I haven't heard about any plans for water consumption, which is a real issue, because we know we get rationed on water here. We've had fires because we don't have water, you know, it hasn't rained. So, these are just things we haven't discussed, and it feels kind of rushed, like a car sale, you know? We're having this hearing right now, and everybody go vote tomorrow. And honestly, I was shocked to get mailers from OG&E and see campaign signs for OG&E like they were running for something. And I understand about the investments to education and all of that, but I think when y'all do something like this, and I'm not saying the data center's bad, but when y'all do something like this, I'm a property owner, and a lot of other people are property owners that probably own their property a lot longer than I have. I think that there should have been a lot more public discussion about this. So, I voted no for OG&E, and I know that that doesn't, you know, that's not a vote on no on the data center, but I just wanted to give my input, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Lois Green?
My name is Lois Green. I live up the street, 1012 South Lewis. My water turns beet red a lot of times during the year. I'm concerned about the water impact. There's not enough water. Do we have an environmental impact report yet? Do you guys have one? Environmental impact report?
We're not to that stage yet, but yes, there will be an environmental impact report.
Okay. You have one. Is that available for public?
There's no environmental impact report available for public reviewing at this point.
Why is that?
We're not to that point in the project.
Okay. Well, then, so then, it's been stated that we will have an opportunity to vote on the data project itself?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then, interesting. There's a little too much secrecy going on about the company, how much water, how much water are they going to use? There's not enough water now. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for being here. I have no one else sign up to speak. At this point, I will close the public hearing. I will make a couple of comments, specifically to maybe a couple of the last speakers about public discussion, that sort of thing. I mean, I certainly understand that, I mean, it's only been a few months, I suppose, since we started having this discussion publicly. I can't remember if it was, I think we appointed the initial committee to look at this about May 1st, sometime in that timeframe back in the spring that these conversations started. The review committee met in July. We've had several posts and comments about this for several months, and so, I certainly, you know, I understand this is a long-term discussion when it comes to city staff, when any kind of a business comes here and says, hey, we'd like to put a facility in your community, we need to talk about what's available, all that sort of thing. Those discussions happen for a long, long time before any of those projects really become questions of public concern, and so, that's certainly not out of the ordinary. I do think we've had a lot of public discussion about this. I think the council has engaged in a lot of individual meetings, we've engaged in a lot of community meetings. I've responded to a lot of Facebook comments, so we're certainly not trying to not talk about it, and I certainly appreciate when folks feel like maybe they haven't had as much conversation as they've wanted, but we're certainly still talking about it. We haven't actually gotten to that point. And that, I guess, is the other thing I wanted to just make sure we're all clear about. As Mr. Bachelor said at the beginning of this, we're talking about a tax incentive project plan. That's what would be, later on our agenda, there's an ordinance that we will talk about in a second, but that ordinance would have to be passed in order to adopt the project plan in and of itself. If that ordinance is adopted, we would then have to enter into an economic development agreement with this company. That economic development agreement does address some of the concerns that people have stated about environmental impact, about water usage, all those sorts of things. Those details are covered and specifically mandated within that agreement that says, this is how much water is available for this project, this is what we expect you to do from an environmental standpoint, this is how all the planning and project and permitting and all that sort of stuff work. That's what that agreement's for, and it's the intention of that agreement is to make sure that we, as a city, are setting boundaries and we're setting expectations and we're able to hold the company to those expectations. So, the concern about saying one thing and then coming in doing another, that's what these agreements are for, so that we know exactly what to expect as a community, and we can hold the developer to those expectations, just like we would in any other economic development project. The third thing I'll say is there have been a couple of comments about the OG&E election, which is, you know, early voting, and then tomorrow's Election Day. The decision on whether to allow a franchise for OG&E to serve this development is a separate issue than whether we allow the development in the first place. The ordinance, the economic development agreement, those are questions for the council at this point. If those things pass, if there is a development that actually gets built, the question of whether OG&E can serve is what we're talking about when we talk about the OG&E election. And so, it is not a vote on the data center itself, it is a vote on whether OG&E has the ability to serve at a 3% franchise fee that specific development and that specific development only. So, hopefully, you know, that clears that up. We do have additional information on our city website, stillorderok.gov/datacenter. We'll give you all that same information that we've been, we've had out there for several weeks and months to provide the background information. Counselors, any further comments? Feel free to, I'm not sure what the...
All right. Well, I just wanted to comment that there's concerns about water usage and our ability to serve that for the data center. The most water they can use under the agreement that is being developed is 2.7 million gallons per day. That is well within our ability to serve it in the northeast region. We have way more capacity than that, and that is not at all a concern in terms of taking the water and running it through the wastewater treatment plant, that also is not a concern. In fact, our biggest concern, frankly, is getting too much clean water from them and putting it through wastewater, because we have a biological water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, that requires dirty water, and if we get too much clean water, that potentially is a problem. And in this case, for the first two phases, that is not a concern either, that's well within our ability to treat it.
Thank you.
We have had all those conversations.
All right. So, that takes us through item seven on the agenda. At this point, given that the sort of other issue on the agenda that deals with this is the ordinance, the ordinance on second read, section 9A of the agenda, if nobody has an objection.
Did you close?
I think I did close the public hearing, but if I didn't, I'll close the public hearing now. And I'm going to jump us ahead to item nine in the agenda to the ordinance. As recommended by our special counsel, because we want to make sure that EDA, that lines out exactly everything we expect the company to do and, you know, addresses some of the concerns about clean energy, we want to make sure we've got that all buttoned up. We're still working that through. I will, I'll move that we continue action on ordinance 3546 to our regular meeting on December 2nd, 2024. With a motion and a second to continue action on the ordinance to December 2nd, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, action on that, the agenda item is continued to December 2nd. All right. At this point, we'll jump back up to item 8A in our agenda. This is a resolution number CC-2024-35, a resolution of the Storey City Council adopting the Community Development Block Grant Section III Annual Plan, directed at increasing the utilization of low and very low-income residents and businesses within the CDPG project site.
The city is the recipient of federal grant funding through the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, Community Development Blocks, Grant Small Cities, which requires adoption of a Section III plan. Section III is a provision of the Federal Housing and Urban Development Act and ensures employment and other opportunities generated by federal assistance for housing and community development programs are, to the greatest extent feasible, directed towards low and very low-income persons, those who have, who receive government assistance for housing, and those business concerns, which provide economic opportunities to low and very low-income persons. The Section III plan applies to public construction projects when assistance for the projects exceeds $200,000. The Section III plan outlines how the City of Stillwater, any sub-receipients, contractors, and subcontractors will comply with those requirements. Adoption of this resolution adopts the city's Section III plan. Shelley Crines is here if there are other questions.
Counselors, questions? Is there action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2024-35.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, resolution CC-2024-35 is adopted. Item 8B is resolution CC-2024-36, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma Municipal Corporation, to sign and issue an election proclamation calling for a general election and a runoff election, if needed, in the City of Stillwater. This is our regular election resolution for seat four, which is currently held by Kristi Hawkins. This would call for an election on February 11th, 2025, with a potential runoff, if needed, on April 1st, 2025. That's right, 2025, right? This would be for the regular term of seat number four. So, questions, comments, or action on that resolution?
I move adoption of resolution CC-2024-36. Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, resolution 2024-36 is adopted. Just for my information, it's usually in December, like the first week of December, that candidates would sign up for that.
Candidate filing is December 2nd through the 4th.
So, candidate filing for seat number four will be December 2nd through the 4th. And mark your calendars for another election day, which would be much less, I don't know, less of something in February of 2025. All right, we did ordinances on number nine, so we'll go to number 10, reports from officers and the board. Ms. Carnley?
Request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS Section 307B4 involving confidential communication between the city council and city attorney concerning pending PFAS litigation and class action settlements with TICO and BASF, including whether to join the settlements. It is the opinion of the city attorney that disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes. Save the date and participate in the annual 2024 Parade of Lights and Tree Lighting Event on Thursday, December 5, 2024, at 6:30 PM in downtown Stillwater. Stillwater Community Center, visit Stillwater Downtown. Association President Colette Campbell are accepting parade participant entry forms now until Friday, November 15th at 5:00 PM. To download the entry form and information and for details on other holiday fun, go to Always a fantastic time. If you haven't been to the Holiday Parade, last year's was the best yet, and it's, all the floats are a lot of fun, so get your applications in and join us for the Holiday Parade. Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Yes, I have another save the date. For November 16th, 2024, join us for a second volunteer day at Washington School. Volunteers are welcome from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and lunch will be provided by the Stillwater Community Center Foundation. The volunteer registration and waiver forms are available online. Volunteers will need to be dressed appropriately, so clothes, toes, shoes, et cetera. Work will focus on cleaning up trees and yard waste, removal and breakdown of exterior breezeways, and overall general exterior cleanup. We hope you can join us as we continue efforts to restore this incredible historical facility that serves as a beacon of hope and progress for our community.
Yeah, excellent. Great, great event. The first one of those was indoor cleaning up old insulation and all kinds of stuff inside, which was not a lot of fun. This one will be a little bit...
Yeah, it'll be great. That exterior cleanup does a lot sometimes when you're driving by. It's important to see the progress that can happen and start to see the vision of what that space will be for our community.
Absolutely. When is it, November?
November 16th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
All right. Counselor Clark?
We currently have surveys being conducted for our neighborhood parks and for Sunset Park. If you utilize these specific spaces or live in neighborhoods near these parks, please participate in the short surveys. Also, we know it is early, but we ask that you save the date now and plan to attend the community meeting on January 9, 2025, to provide input as we develop a vision plan for parks, community spaces, and public facilities. These are your parks and your community spaces, and we want to make sure they meet the needs of our residents and families. Your voice matters, so please plan to attend to join us on January 9. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/parks.
Those surveys of specific park users are really, really, really helpful. If you go out to those community parks, please let us know what you're out there and that you're using them and the kinds of things you'd like to see in them, for sure. Counselor Harden?
I am proud to share with our community a new volunteer program led by Stillwater Police Department and Dispatch upon request of healthy communities, healthy childrens. This allows individuals, parents, guardians, and caregivers to assist first responders in emergency situations that involve individuals with special needs and health conditions. The program called SAID, which stands for Special Needs Alerts on Identification. Participants submit their information and is securely entered into the Emergency Responder Dispatch System. The SAID alert is not a public record, and information will only be used by Stillwater Police and first responders. The information provided explains special needs and conditions to first responders prior to arriving to an incident in an effort to improve the response, interaction, and communication with all individuals involved. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact Stillwater Police Department's Records Department at 405-742-8222, or go online to stillwaterok.gov/said. I'd like to make a comment about this. This will allow special responders, if they get a call to a particular address and they've been alerted there's a special needs person at this address, the first responders will be given information about the special needs person, what the special needs are, and if there's any special handling necessary. So, it will be a private in the system. The first responders will then be given information to be alerted, and the police have even told me that if a call comes in from next door and says, there's a noise, a real bad noise at my address next door, it will actually pop up on the system, there's an issue, and the information will be passed along to first responders. This is a really good program. Thank you all for doing this.
That's great. Thank you. I will remind you that election 2024 is underway, with thousands who have already participated in early voting. We appreciate everyone who exercises their democratic right to vote, and for who and for what they believe is best. As always, we encourage voters to educate themselves on many items that will be included on the ballot. For a sample ballot, you can go to votepaincounty.com or elections-ok.gov. If you're voting tomorrow on official Election Day, polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You'll need to go to your normal polling location, so if you have your voter ID card, your location is on that card. If you're not sure, go to elections-ok.gov, Google the Oklahoma Voter Portal, and you just put in your name and your birthday, and it'll show exactly where you have to go to vote tomorrow. You don't go to the library or to the Chamber of Commerce in Cushing like we did for early voting, go to your precinct. If you early voted, you don't get to vote again, just so you know. Again, the OG&E franchise proposition that we were just speaking about relative to the data center project will be on the ballot for Stillwater voters if you live in the Storey city limits. If you needed additional information about that proposition, again, please go to stillwaterok.gov/datacenter.
I got to, my son voted for the first time this year. It was really exciting to take him through the ballot and show him how to educate himself on all the different things. I feel like I educated myself a little bit while I was teaching him how to do that. It was such a proud moment.
It's a big, big life moment, for sure.
And if you're in the City of Stillwater, my understanding is you're going to get two ballots. You'll get one ballot for the general election and a separate ballot just for the OG&E...
Yes.
That is correct. OG&E item.
All right. At this time, I will move that we recess the city council meeting prior to item 12 on the agenda.
Second.
With a motion and a second to recess city council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the city council will now be in recess. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for November 4th, 2024. 4th, 2024. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. Takes us to item five on the agenda, which is to receive an annual report by MMO Partners. Consider approval of an extension agreement with MMO Partners for federal advocacy services in the amount of $79,200 to approve the associated budget amendment and authorize the general manager to sign the documents. Kristi Clark.
So we do have Mr. Pagonas here this evening to provide a presentation. He is from MMO Partners and is going to deliver their annual report, and then I will have a recommendation from staff at the conclusion of that.
Thank you, Kristi.
Good evening, I guess Chairman of the Board, Madam Chair, and Trustees. My name is Kyriakos Pagonas, I'm Vice President at MMO Partners. We're a DC-based government affairs firm. Chuck Thomas is here with me tonight, the brains of the operation. Thanks, Chuck, for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, but more importantly, thank you for the opportunity to represent this utility in Washington. It's been our pleasure over the past two years to work with you, your excellent staff, and the delegation to bring some victories back to Stillwater. Today, we're going to go over some of the work that we've been doing on behalf of the utility in 2024. Next slide, please. Before we get into some, oh, do I do it? Sorry. Okay, next slide for myself, thank you. Chuck, you're here for something. Before we get into the highlights, I wanted to just kind of give you a little bit of an overview. I'm sure you all are following what's going on with elections and sort of impact on Congress, et cetera, but just to give you a little bit of an overview of where we stand, you know, post tomorrow, Congress is set to come back November 12th to gavel in session. Their top priorities really to, to pass a budget. We're operating under a continuing resolution that goes through December 20th, so Congress will have some decisions to make about whether or not to pass a full-year FY25 budget to kick the can into next year, meaning pass another continuing resolution, which is what they did last year. So there, there are a number of things that the election will dictate in that regard, so a lot of this does depend on what happens tomorrow and over the next few days. The other thing that, or there's a couple other things that are on the agenda as well. There's an emergency supplemental bill that would provide more funding to FEMA to address some of the recent natural disasters in Florida. There's also a National Defense Authorization Act, which typically gets done before the appropriations bills, but they may lump them together. And then, and then last, there's a Water Resources Development Act bill that authorizes funding for the Corps of Engineers, which the city also has a stake in. We expect that bill, which has bipartisan support on both sides of the aisle, to really, you know, be non-controversial and hopefully gets a ride on a continuing resolution or a final spending package or the National Defense Authorization Act. So that kind of gives you a context of sort of where we are in DC when, when Congress comes back next week. One thing that is not on this highlight, because it wasn't FY23 item but didn't get resolved until March, was your earmark for a million dollars for the, the system, the water system. That was included in the 23 package. It didn't get done until, actually, it was FY24, my apologies. It didn't get done until March of this year, so that was done and signed into law. So a million dollars for the system, for the solid contact units, which we are carrying over, additional requests for more funding for that project, and that's number two on this item. You'll see that up there. So there's 850,000 included in the FY25 Interior Appropriations Bill to continue funding that project. That was requested by both Representative Lucas and Senator Mullen. 850,000 was included in the House bill, just to be clear. And again, we're, that, that project is sort of tied into what happens with a continuing resolution or not next week and thereafter. And then 30 million, as I alluded to, is in the Water Resources Development Act of 2024. That bill, again, authorizes the Corps of Engineers to do work on projects, and we do have 30 million dollars authorized in both the House and Senate bills, so the city and utility are in a very strong position, barring some major, you know, issue with the bill getting done. There's no issue with the project, it's more a matter of how the bill gets reconciled at this point. Again, that, that bill typically is done every two years in a bipartisan fashion. Obviously, there are no guarantees, but this is a bill that usually gets done with, with pretty strong support on both sides, so we feel pretty, really good about that. And then, really to sort of highlight, you know, the work that gets done, you know, we put numbers up here, but it does, it does take, you know, staff time, significant staff time from the city side and then the work that we do, working with staff, and then, you know, some of the advocacy work that, you know, the council and mayor has done, coming back to DC, meeting with folks, you know, we have on there FEMA, the US Corps of Engineers. I know the mayor met with the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee, which does authorize the Word of Bill, and then the delegation, so there, there is significant outreach that happens over the course of the year to get, to get to this, this point in the progress, in the process. I'll say next slide. So I'll turn it over to Chuck at this point to kind of go over some of the work with FEMA and then other opportunities.
Thank you. Excuse me. So in addition to all of the work with the, with the delegation and with the headquarters offices, we're also looking at all of the various funding opportunities that kind of come up throughout any year on their cycle, so as these come up, the idea is to evaluate them, compare them with the city projects that are, that we're seeking funding to support, and trying to make sure that we can match those up and identify good fits for those funding applications. These are some of the examples that we've been working with over this past year. The first one was with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Building Resilience Infrastructure in Communities Project Development. One of the good things that we've had is an opportunity to pursue direct technical assistance, and that was an application process. The city did apply for and was successful in getting accepted into that program, which brings a lot of additional staff from FEMA and their contractors to bear on evaluating a project and helping move that application process forward. So that's been monthly and biweekly meetings for quite a while now with FEMA Region Six and, and the state emergency management staff as well. We've also looked at the Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Programs. There's a lot of a suite of applications of funding opportunities there for water efficiency, for drought resiliency, all those programs as well, and then, as well as the Economic Development Agency, Public Works, and Economic Adjustment Assistance Programs. These are programs to support public works projects that have an economic benefit within a given community and using those factors to identify a project or to work with an application, as opposed to like with a FEMA application, which is more disaster-based and recovering from, from disaster. So there's a broad range of funding sources that are out there, and these are some of the ones that we worked on in this past year.
So actually, before we go into sort of the 2025 scope and FY26 scope, I wanted to go back a little bit on the Word of Water Resources Development Act authorization, and it's just that, it's, it's an authorization bill that doesn't, it requires appropriations to, to get, you know, allocated towards whatever projects we put forward, but it really gives the city its own account within that program, so, you know, unless Congress removes that authorization, you'll have it until it, it's, it does get removed, and then so, you know, in future years, you would, you know, request funding against that authorization. So that, that really does give the city and utility another account, if you will, to go after funding for projects that are authorized under that authority. So there's, I think, under the language, there is water, wastewater, and water supply that are authorized under that provision. So I just wanted to clear that up. It wasn't, you know, meant to, I didn't mean to try to sell it as like a 30 million dollar checks coming to Stillwater tomorrow. So looking forward, we'll continue to work with the city, the utility, and FEMA to finalize an application for BRIC, finalize the FY25 appropriations and the Word of Bill. Again, the Word of Bill probably has a better shot of getting done this year. I'd say the, the 25 appropriations are looking a little bit more like, I wouldn't be surprised if there was another continuing resolution into March or sometime early next year, so, so we'll continue to watch that and work with you all on, on getting that finalized. Developing, you know, the next set of requests for FY26, you know, projects, so we're going to be having conversations with staff over the next few months and you all to put together, you know, a list of requests. Continue outreach with federal agencies and Congress, you know, there'll be, regardless of what happens tomorrow, there, there's going to be, you know, new folks in the administration at the agency level. There'll be certainly some, some turnover on the Hill, so, you know, for better or worse, we're, we sort of start over in some, in some regards, you know, reeducating folks about the project and its benefits, and then, you know, monitoring, as Chuck just talked about, you know, some of the new funding opportunities that will, will come up. And I think that, that... Questions?
Trustees, questions?
I just want to say that in terms of return on investment, this is some of the best money we spend, and I appreciate what you do for our community.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate the comments. And again, I, I think I've said this before, it's, it's a team sport, you know, we, we do what we can do, and then you have good staff back here and obviously the work that you all put in to, to get us to this point, so, thank you.
I will say that I've visited DC usually a couple times a year the last couple of years, and Kyriakas has dragged me around to every possible federal office that we could talk to and has had, you know, been prepared, has prepared that staff so that when we walk into the office, we, they know what we're there for, they're, they're ready to go, hear the pitch, and, and I agree with Trustee Clark that certainly the Word Authorization, the BRIC program, all that sort of stuff would not be something that, that we probably would have been, you know, on the, on the board to, to be looking at without the help of MMO, so it's, it's been a good relationship and a very fruitful one for the community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Kristi, do you have a recommendation for us on the item? Thank you both for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. A motion to approve extension agreement number two with MMO Partners for federal advocacy services in the amount of $79,200. Approve associated budget amendment and authorize the general manager to sign related documents.
Trustees.
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the item, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, recommendation is approved. Anything, any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this point, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council at item 12 on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the reason requested by the city attorney?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater City Council will now enter executive session. And we're back. Is there a motion to reconvene in regular session?
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene Stillwater City Council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater City Council is back in session. Any, any action from executive session?
I move to withdraw the exclusion to opt out of the settlements and approve participating in the Tyco and BASF settlements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Whoa, I think I'll vote. With a vote of three to zero with one abstention, that motion passes.
Mayor, I just wanted to state for the record that out of an abundance of caution, I have abstained from that vote. My company that I work for does work with one of those companies.
All right, thank you. Any further action? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for this evening.